Roger.
Good morning.
Good morning. How's everything going?
It's, it's going.
Yeah.
Can't complain.
Guessing you're rushing to get everything done before the end of the year so you can have a day off?
I'm actually, well, I'm working actually remotely from, I was in early, earlier in office for about three hours now, I'm working from home.
Yeah, that, that, that's kind of how it is at our place. It's, in fact, I probably, I'm probably in there maybe a day or two a week now, just, you know, it's so easy just to get things done where you're at now that, that's just how you do it, I guess, so.
That's, I, quite frankly, that's about the only way I, I get, because if I'm in there, it's constantly, the, even if the door's closed, it doesn't matter. They, they come in, barge in.
Phones ringing, yeah, yeah.
Ring and you just, you know, everything's an emergency right then and there. It's amazing how when I go, when I work from home, all of a sudden, there's no emergencies.
And you seem to get a lot more done too, I've noticed, yeah.
Get a lot more done.
Yeah. Alrighty, I, we're still waiting on the judge, but I guess you and I can start chatting if you're ready.
That's fine.
Uh, I guess we'll just start with a general question about the year. Um, it seemed, you know, obviously with COVID hitting, that affected everything, but it seems like generally, uh, the county from an organizational, financial standpoint, came through it okay.
Yeah, we did. Um, back to my, I'm trying to pull up some, at the pool, I was trying to get this computer up so I could actually pull up some numbers, I'm pretty sure you're gonna ask me. Um, but yeah, I mean, we, we, you know, it, it, we saw initially that, that March, that basically, March was a strong month, uh, for the most part because just the, the pat, you know, the run-up, everybody kind of ran out and, and stuff like that. Now, we did see April, May, you know, that June stretch there, three months where at least the more economically sensitive type of revenue, and we don't have that many, I mean, that building permits, we do receive some sales tax, but not much, and we're heavily property tax-based, which, you know, we really don't, you know, those, those type of revenues, like, since when the Great Recession happened, you know, it was probably eighteen months before we felt the full impact of it after the stock market debacle and, and the whole, uh, housing market deal. You know, and that gave us time to plan, and then same kind of thing here, uh, you know, we, we saw those sort of revenues go down for like three months, but then it just came back like gamebusters, you know, the last, during the summer, and it, and actually it's been, ended up being one of the stronger years we've, we've had, so.
I mean, it's an odd year. I know, you know, I, I talked to the guys in Opelika and Auburn a lot, and in the spring, everybody reasonably, you know, was dreading what was gonna happen to the, their sales tax revenues, and then Jim Buston from Auburn told me in the summer that, uh, actually, their, their revenue collections from new car sales and used car sales shot up dur- during that time. He figured it was probably the stimulus checks, you know, everybody taking a chance to put a decent down payment on something new, but, but, uh, yeah, I, I mean, in, in, in March, I don't know anybody who thought this is gonna, I didn't know anybody who thought it's gonna come out good, and by the end of the summer, it was, uh, yeah, you know, all things considered, everything kind of worked out okay.
Yeah, I, I, you know, it just, uh, and yeah, we, we, uh, we get a little sales tax outside Auburn, up like in Phoenix City for recreation, and we have the strongest year, we've, we've, we've been collecting that, I think that tax went into effect, I want to think it was like November thirteenth, if I'm not mistaken, and so we, you know, we, we hadn't had a long time, but in the time we've had it, this past year was the strongest year we've ever had. I mean, it, it eclipsed almost, uh, two million dollars. And we started off originally about around eight hundred thousand dollars back in Portage, so.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Now, I, I, I'm curious, I, I don't recall, but, you know, was, what, 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 were there any big capital projects or whatever that you guys had to put on hold or, or, or whatever for now, or were you guys able to carry out all of your, your projected spending and everything?
No.
Judge.
Good morning, y'all. Was on my previous Zoom, sorry.
It's okay. Uh, Roger, like I was asking, I mean, did, did COVID, you know, force you guys to, to delay any big projects?
No, we, we didn't. We, in fact, we were, we were right in the middle of, uh, a couple of projects when all this kind of happened, which was the courtroom finish-out of the Justice Center, uh, which, the timing of it ended up being, you know, ideal, and just the fact that we finished that courtroom right before they started back to actually holding court. And what, that, what made, what made it so important was is by far, you know, easily the largest courtroom by any stretch of imagination out there, and it allowed them to have a large space to start holding court back again, obviously, social distancing and all this stuff like that, it became very crucial that we had started that project and was able to finish it, um, during, during, you know, during when everything was kind of shut down for a while. We finished up the, the courthouse renovation on the, the first floor, and I kind of hated that, you know, we kind of shut down that front entrance because it's actually very ni-, it looks very nice now, there's a very nice.
Yeah, it's gorgeous, yeah.
Yeah, you know, but we can't use it, you know, we had, had to close down to one entrance, we're, we're using the main, the one in the back, uh, uh, we haven't been able to really show off that new, a new floor in there that has the nice emblem in there, uh, but I mean, other than that, I mean, we really pretty much stayed on track with all of our projects. We started two ballfields up in Beulah and Beauregard, in fact, Beulah's finished, um, well, they should be able to start playing out there before long, and you know, we, we really did not miss a beat as far as projects are concerned.
Good. Now, uh, your honor, and aside from being the probate judge, you also chair the county commission, and you're also uh, in charge of the county elections. Uh, the March primary came off fine, it wasn't, I don't recall that it was affected by COVID because it took place right as COVID was breaking. Did you have any trouble getting the primary, uh, taken care of?
Oh, sure. Oh, sure, and typically low turnout.
Yeah.
I can look and tell you, but it was, we always have a lower turnout in a presidential primary than we do in a governor's, and so we weren't expecting much and didn't have much.
Right.
Uh, but there were no COVID precautions prior to the March primary.
Sure. Now, of course, then immediately, of course, you, you had the runoff to deal with, and obviously the busiest general election in the county's history. Um, Roger and I were talking a bit about expectations back in March, how everyone was concerned about how tax revenues were gonna come out, what was gonna be possible, what wasn't gonna be possible. What, uh, back, once you got clear of the spring primary, you had to start looking at the runoff in the general, I mean, were you concerned about this, this COVID really throwing a wrench in the works, or did you just get down to work?
Mike, we were scheduled for a runoff March thirty-first.
Yeah.
And on March third, we thought that's when it would be, so March was pretty up and down, waiting to see what the state would do concerning the timing. I think one of the biggest benefits of the delay was it allowed everybody, all the counties, to get in a bunch of supplies. And Roger could probably tell us how that came about, or how it was funded, or who provided what, but, you know, we were able to order pretty much everything we felt like we needed to keep our poll workers safe. And I'm gonna be honest, I expected half or more of the poll workers to go, ah, no, no thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
And probably fifteen percent at best said, no, the rest said, I'll work.
Well, sure.
And, you know, most of those are on up in years, we don't have very many twenty or thirty-year-old poll workers.
Yeah.
Sixty, seventies, eighties, and hats off to them. I, I don't know how we, uh, we were really worried about pulling off the runoff if most of them said stay at home, so. I, I, I'm gonna shout out for poll workers from now on, and they did the same thing, they stepped up again in November, but I think in November, what was even bigger was a hundred and fifty people who've never worked at, sign me up, put me in, coach. And that's just in this environment, to be willing to see thousands of people today. Now, we provided masks and face shields and gloves and hand sanitizer and hand gel and wipes and trash cans and, I mean, everything we could, uh, absent putting them in bubble suits. Uh, the only downfall I knew of was a lady fell and broke her shoulder. One of the poll workers fell and broke her shoulder.
Yeah.
But I've heard nobody, and I've asked several of the chiefs post-runoff and post-general, you heard of anybody getting sick? And most of them are saying, you know, that I, I've seen very little sickness this year compared to most years. I think our, our protections and our masks and our hand washings are keeping us away from some of the colds we'd normally have, so.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I've read that in other places too, that that's why they think the, the seasonal flu's not so bad this year, is in part because we're all wearing masks now.
I don't have a single girl in my office here at the courthouse who's had a cold this fall.
Right, right. I can't think of anybody at work who's.
Roger knows that's pretty scary.
Now, I, I, and, and, and just, I mean, before we move on to another subject, I think, e- especially in the case of the general election, it was, I, I, I mean, it, it, as, for as busy as it was, for all the absentee voting ahead of time, and I'm sure just the untold extra hours, the small election staff had to put into prep for that. Uh, that Tuesday, I mean, it just ran like a well-oiled machine. I, I don't, I mean, is, did, did you expect that? Or, I mean, because I, I was shocked, to be honest.
I was hopeful, but I, I don't think I can say I expected it.
Yeah.
Matter of fact, Tuesday morning in November, I rode around, I was, I'd been to two or three precincts by six-thirty, and I saw the lines, and I told a buddy, I said, I think I'm gonna go on down to the beach, I'll see y'all. Cause it looked that bad.
Yeah.
Hats off to how smooth it worked. Uh, I think the biggest single story of the general election was the absentee issue. The second biggest story was the use of the poll pads in most of the precincts. That really helped the line uh, stay within reasonable limits. Uh, you mentioned the biggest election ever, it is in terms of the number of people who came and voted, it is not our best turnout. Our turnout in November was the same exact turnout as four years ago. Percentage-wise. Because we now have more voters, we had a, more people go vote. So it was a record from that perspective, but it wasn't a record turnout. The best turnout we ever had was two thousand eight general election, when President Obama was elected the first time. It was sixty-three percent. It's sad, that's our record, but that's what our record is.
Now, yeah, I, I want to pivot a little bit, or, again, you know, Roger and I were talking a little bit about just the county's finances when, when you came in. Uh, and then you touched upon how you had to order in a lot of PPE and everything for the election workers and all that. Let's talk a little bit about county operations, uh, during all of a sudden, beginning in March and working on through the summer, you had a lot of people who had to stay at home while they quarantined, uh, probably a lot of people who had never worked from home before, or worked online, you know, from the house or whatever, who had to get trained up on that. Roger, um, has, from, from just a county services standpoint, what was that transition like to, you know, the realities of COVID?
Well, you know, I'd, I'd say probably the first thing we had to deal with is how, exactly how we were going to deal with how suddenly, you know, um, this came upon us as far as, you know, all of a sudden, especially when, you know, Trump announced the whole thing with the, the airlines and shutting, you know, shutting that aspect down, and you realize, no, this is really serious, we're, we're up to deal with it. Uh, it was very helpful, and I, I, I take the head, head, my hats off to, you know, our, our overall point authorities, which is the other elected official, the sheriff, the, the, probably judging his appoint authority role, uh, revenue commissioner, of course, the, the, the county engineer, and just, you know, coming together and coming up with, uh, basically some emergency policies that were still operating under and, and had to put in place quickly, as far as protecting, you know, those who definitely were at higher risk, you know, coming up with something we've never had to deal with before, and kind of, you know, pitching in and, 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 um, get on the same page as far as how we're going to handle our, our personnel, at the same time, still keep operations going. Obviously, on, we, we, we closed the courthouse to the public, encouraging them to go online and do stuff, and of course, we, we did some delaying of, of, uh, you know, fees and penalties and stuff like that, especially during those first few months, until obviously we could get a handle on what we were dealing with. Uh, so that, that was a challenge in and of itself. Uh, fortunately, our IT staff has always been on top of things, uh, starting with Tim Parsons here, and then of course Amanda Sides, who's now our IT director. We were already in a good position technology-wise, be able to start allowing people, especially, we still have some that are, that, uh, that are high-risk, that are telecommuting, and not many anymore, we probably, I probably can count them on one hand, maybe up to three people that are still because of their situation are, are still telecommuting, and, and they could, they have the type of job that allows them to do that. Unfortunately, we don't have a whole lot of positions that can do that.
Mm-hmm.
But again, we didn't have to do a whole lot, we didn't have to go buy a whole bunch of equipment, we didn't have to buy a whole bunch, we bought some, bought some laptops, uh, for those employees, and especially the ones that, that early on. But as far as having the ability, getting all that set up, the only thing we had to learn was Zoom, because apparently nobody knew what Zoom was until, until.
I heard of it, yeah.
You know, I'll echo that, our IT staff up their game this year, big time. They, they did more for elections this year than they've ever had to do, by a long shot.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I mean, that whole department's what, Roger, four people?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's, uh.
To serve a county of how many people? What, about a hundred fifty thousand?
Well, oh, pop, voters, no, we're at a hundred and twenty, hmm, let me look, I've got it right here. Uh, si- population-wise, we're over a hundred and sixty, I'm maybe even over a hundred and sixty-five now. Voters, we were at a hundred and twenty-four.
Okay, dog.
But IT folks.
Uh, and, Judge, you, you were one of the first, I mean, I, I think all the public officials in the university, everybody responded promptly and effectively to, to the pandemic outbreak. You were one of the first public officials, though, to really stress that, you know, this, this is nothing to be taken lightly, this isn't just the usual winter cold, it's, you know, we've got to take it very seriously, and we're gonna have to, to, to work, you know, the commission's gonna have to take every precaution, we can't pack the hearing room anymore and all of that. Wha- what was it particularly that, it seemed, I mean, because you were a, a bit more firm in your comments than the rest of the public officials in the county, to be honest, when all this started. And wha- what was it that concerned you the most?
Well, I'm a stats nerd, I'm a numbers guy. I started charting the counts of cases of deaths, of tests for every county, every day, and every night, I would download that dashboard and plug in data. And the data was telling me, you know, I, I don't, I'm a has-been paramedic, I was a paramedic years ago, but I don't know enough medicine to know whether we should be all about this or just ignore it. But I kept looking at numbers going, holy crap, did y'all see this? I, I made a couple of presentations to the commission saying, hey, guys, look at these numbers. You know, we had the primary March third, we really didn't have an issue. I had a, one of my employees go on a cruise a couple of days later, she wound up being out all of March and all of April, and then come back to work till May, because we took it to the commission. Uh, our first meeting was the, of March was the night, and we showed them some numbers. Uh, our second March meeting, we were asking them to close the courthouse, and they did, and the satellites, I mean, that.
Yeah.
You know, I just, we put all of our over sixty-five people out, oh, Roger, a week before we closed, didn't we? At least.
Yeah.
And said, hey, if you're high-risk, I, I have one who's immunocompromised, and go to the house. And we have had to answer and help and deal with customers who were less than thrilled that our service was hampered.
Right.
But, you know, I, I've told my girls, this probably back in March, I said, they don't have a mask, don't wait on them.
Right.
And a customer said to me out here in a fairly angry tone one day, he wouldn't wear his mask, he had to wear it to get in the building and took it off.
Right.
And the girl said, sir, I'm sorry, I can't help you. I'll see your boss. And I went out there and said, sir, I'm sorry, but you'll have to wear your mask in this office. You can't make me do that. I said, yes, you're absolutely right, thank you. And I turned to walk off, and he said, what about my license? I said, well, you can't make me sell you that license. If you want to buy your license, you're gonna have to wear a mask. It's up to you. And he put it on and got his license, but I think the girls came away going, are you serious about this?
Yeah.
You know, I just, you can like it or not like it, you can make it a political statement if you want to. Our job, Rogers' and mine, is try to keep these county employees safe.
Yeah.
You know, we serve the public, and I get that, and I get that, that's part of the one, but I'm not gonna do it in a manner that jeopardizes the county employees.
Well, and, and, in a related ques-, I mean, I guess I have to bring this up, you know, Lee County suffered a pretty tough loss to COVID, uh, back, you know, in the late spring. Uh, if you each could tell me, wha- what kind of guy was Johnny Lawrence like to work with? I knew him as a business acquaintance, and uh, he was obviously a very dedicated public servant, but I, I can't say that, you know, I knew him even one one-hundredth as well as you guys did. Uh, but Johnny did a lot of good in a lot of places around this county. I was wondering, maybe if you two could speak to that for a moment?
I'll let you go first.
Uh, well, man, you know, for me, Johnny came on the commission basically a year after I got here, and I've been here well over nineteen years, so he was here eighteen or nineteen, and, um, you know, we weren't, you know, we weren't buddies and friends, and I'd hang out with him on the weekends, but we've been through a lot together as far as the county's concerned, and of course, uh, saw each other's, you know, daughters grow up, um, you know, basically. Uh, so, you know, that aspect of the thing, that's how we, how we really knew each other, and it, and that, you know, when, especially when he got sick and he got in ICU, I, you know, it was, it was, uh, you know, I, I kind of figured, you know, he had about a fifty-fifty shot, and tried to prepare for the, you know, what ended up actually happening, and I still wasn't prepared for it. I still.
Right.
Judge calling me, letting me know, and I was devastated, I mean, I, it, it shook me, uh, in fact, to the point in time that I, I, I was told to my wife, I said, yeah, I think I'm gonna turn my retirement papers in on Monday. Uh, you know, life's too short and, and, uh, I, you know, but, you know, it, it, it definitely made me rethink the way I kind of look at things differently, but just because of, of, uh, again, he, you know, he was definitely somebody who cared about the community. I, I, you know, one thing I can say is that, you know, I've dealt with a lot of, worked with a lot of different officials over my thirty-year career almost, and there's nobody, e- even though there's sometimes he would want to do things, or he said some things I didn't necessarily agree with, I never worried about his motivation, I never worried about, you know, whether he was doing something for himself or not, because regardless, it was always, he always had his community, he always had the community first, you know, in his heart and his mind, and, and I never doubted, you know, I never questioned his mo- motive, motivation. And, uh, I tell you what, we're, we're definitely, we've, we're missing it, and we're definitely gonna miss, miss that.
Your honor?
I met Johnny in nineteen eighty-two, and we were personal friends for a long time. I came to work here in eighty-three. Uh, I didn't have a thought of running for anything until ninety-eight. And I went to maybe a dozen of my better friends and said, all right, confidentially, what do you think about this? And Johnny's one of the people I went to. Mom and dad first, I still remember. And Johnny's one of the people I went to. Mom and dad first. I still remember. And every one of them was encouraging. And I did not think Johnny would be, you know, Johnny worked for the city of Auburn a long time and I knew that Johnny had some less than ideal opinions of the city politics because of his years in the fire service and everything. And I thought Johnny would be one of the ones who said, you don't want to do that because I thought I was going to go practice law. I was going to go leave when Hal left and go be a lawyer and make a lot of money and. But Johnny was an inspiration to me before that. We were on a dive trip. Johnny and I traveled together, fair amount. We've been diving different trips, went to Ohio to a museum together. And I saw a drowning. And I saw three people jump in and save the guy. Johnny was one of them.
Yeah.
And I came back and thought, how do you, where do you learn that? How do you get to be one of those? And I wound up going to EMT school and I taught it for seven years at Southern Union.
Right.
But Johnny was a big part of why I got in it. So I go running in 2000, Johnny's helping my campaign. You know, Johnny's on my side. Johnny's campaigning, helping me and I win and get elected. Shortly thereafter, he said, so what you got to do to run for office? I thought he meant city council at the time.
Right.
But he meant county commission. He challenged an incumbent and beat him. So, and in the primary, I don't think Johnny had general opposition, Roger, in 02. Do you remember?
No, he didn't.
Think he did. Yeah. And been here ever since. And Roger's right. He cared about the community. He cared about everybody in it. And it led him to sometimes want to see both sides. And, you know, there are times you kind of got to make a decision and say, okay, it's going to be A. But Johnny would always go, well, now let's think about B. Got a quick question was his hat line that we heard over and over. And I think Roger's the one that said it meant two things. I mean, it wasn't a question and it wasn't quick. But like him, you know, you never doubted Johnny's ethics about it. You never thought Johnny was doing something to enrich Johnny. And he loved it. I mean, he did. We'd talk. When I took office, I became the chairman of five men who did not want me. Two of them ran against me and the other three supported those two. Well, I came in with no baggage in a sense. I didn't know any of them anything.
Sure.
And Johnny was the first one that got elected that I could talk to, I could open up with, hey, what do you think about, you know, or he'd bring something to me and we, we compared notes and over time, all those first five are gone.
Right.
None on my left. Johnny and I were Johnny and I were hanging it out and talked about hanging it up together. We used to have a running joke because I'd try to get him to eat healthier, don't eat so much or Johnny, come on, man, you gotta lose some weight. You gotta get some exercise. And we had this running joke. He would say to me, English? One day we're both going to be laid up in a nursing home or in a hospital dying. He said, I'm going to know why I'm dying. You're going to be wondering what I do wrong. And when he went in the hospital, I got just cold chills like Roger. You know, I knew Johnny had some underlying health issues that weren't going to make this illness easy on him.
Right, right.
And and I still wasn't prepared. You know, I think, I look at this and I've said this to a couple of people. Johnny's last gift was convincing all of us how serious this is. We all take it more seriously and had we not had a close loss, would we have taken it as seriously? I mean, that's, that's a hell of a way to set an example, but I know he'd be proud to have set an example. He'd be proud. People are doing it because of him.
Yeah. It's the truth. It's the absolute truth.
He had that caregiver personality from his days as a fire medic. He was one of the very first fire medics at Auburn Fire. And it kind of gets in your blood a little bit. It's a, I, I've gotten job satisfaction and aimless. I've never gotten in a courtroom. You know, it's a, it's a crank your motor sometime, but I didn't do it for maybe 10 years. Johnny did it for 30. Of course, he loved telling the stories about it, didn't he, Roger? Golly, you'd hear about it all the time, but you know, maybe his loss has saved some other people.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, I know you're in, you're as busy as I and everybody else are, and I appreciate you making time for me today. I hope you both have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and we'll see you around the courthouse next year, I guess.
Well, Mike, I want to add one thing that I want you to think about. I kind of was trying to prepare for what are the, what are the highlights of this past year and what are, what are we facing in the coming year? And I have to tell you that the quarry and the first battle in the spring versus the quarry today and what's coming, you know, they've applied for a permit, will they now?
Okay, so, so, so Creekwood has went ahead and put in for another permit for up there around Beulah.
Put in for a permit up in the Beulah community.
Right, okay. I, I'd been tracking it, but I hadn't looked in a couple of weeks, so, yeah.
Yeah. That's going to be our big issue for the next several months.
Right, right.
You know, Roger, what else do you see coming this, this coming year?
You know, just obviously the quarry is going to take up a good bit and still, you know, dealing with the pandemic as far as, you know, moving forward. Obviously, the vaccine is starting to go out. We have first responders now, you know, getting that vaccine. So, you know, my thing is just trying to hopefully we'll be winding down, you know, from the pandemic this upcoming year, which would be very helpful. Get back to some sort of what we had before. I don't think we'll go back completely, but at least you know, move forward with that. As far as, other than that, the only real big thing we have on, on tap as far as a project is expanding and remodeling the EMA facility. And hopefully we'll get that project bidded and started this upcoming spring. And some more recreation also. We're probably trying to Beauregard finished up and then try to get concession restrooms at both Beauregard and Beulah. So I'd say those are the two main capital projects I see for the upcoming year.
Now, just, just to go back to the new Creekwood permit, there, there's no incorporated land up around that way, is there? I mean, that's all unincorporated up there.
Correct.
Yeah. So, and this is for my information, I'll probably delete it from the video I put online, but what, I mean, what can you all possibly do about that to keep them from, you know, from, from, from starting blasting? I mean, in Opelika's case, they were able to attach the, they were able to annex and change the use so that it wasn't any good to Creekwood.
Like, I'm, I'm not sure. We probably ought to get into very specific about what might occur. I just think.
I just thought I'd ask since I had you.
Is going to dominate us, but what steps or how, or I think we probably will premature.
Good. Okay, okay. It's, they pay me to ask, so.
I do think we're probably in the coming year going to deal with some possible changes in things like our solid waste system, possibly in our animal control system. I think we're looking to improve how we do what we do. And those are two areas I know that are starting to get a closer look about what we do and how we do it, how, what it costs, how we fund it. Is there a better way? You know, I think it's incumbent on us to periodically look at things that we do and say, could we do this better? Is there a better way, more effective, more efficient? More service kind of thing? So, that was the two areas I saw that I, I think Roger will be on the agenda in the spring, summer, fall months is let's look at solid waste. Let's see if there's a change. Let's look at animal control. See if there's a change. Highway will stay busy. But I don't see any dramatic changes in roads. Do you?
No, other than, you know, finally the build, you know, rebuild Alabama, you know, funding is starting, really starting to kick in. So more work done now. Still way short of what we truly need, but it's a, that, that's been a big help having that funding come in.
Yes, it has.
Have you gotten any guidance from the legislators or from the governor's office about there could be more money in the pipeline for that?
No, no. I mean, because it was indexed, when it was passed, we're still, we're going to see this a little bit more because it was originally passed at six cents and they're, you know, increase it to two cents and then another two cents, up to 10 cents when all of a sudden done. So, right now, we're, we're pretty much, I think that's where we're at as far as the, that funding is concerned. So, you know, my thing is now getting what we're getting and putting it in place is a big, big thing.
Okay. Again, thanks for your time, guys, and it's all good stuff and we'll see you soon.
All right, thanks.